So we'll go ahead and call to order the planning commission for the village of Franklin, regular meeting for Wednesday, September 18th. Thank you all that are able to attend, those that are, um, commissioner, um, plan commissioners, as well as those that support and help us in our village. We'll go ahead and get started with roll call. Um, I'll start from the right. Sarah, do you mind?
Well, Sarah Grislyk here.
Pete Hallock here.
Stuart Wooders here.
Daniel Ferris here.
Lyndon Novak here.
Albert Ludwig here.
All right, welcome everyone. So for the adoption of the agenda, I'd like to make a modification to our agenda. We do have guests here tonight that do, it does pertain to our discussion for the, um, considering it, um, sign, yes, sign ordinance, ordinance. So if it's, um, well, do, do we feel that we need to move it up before old business where it is, or we can skip discussion on pathway first, or just reorganize that, or?
It's a good suggestion.
So is that okay with that? We just switch A and B?
Sure.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor for adopting the agenda with this modification?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so, um, the adoption of the minutes from the last, um, planning meeting.
Minutes look good to me.
Yep, me too.
Comments?
So I do have a couple. Um, page two, Hallock questioned budget surplus and appropriation process. So he suggested using unspent budget from last year for walkability and planning initiatives. So, um, I think I would prefer that that, I'm not sure the exact words, it came out of my mouth, but, um, my intention there was just for, uh, he suggested using unspent budget for, from last year for, um, planning initiatives. I guess we can say that, that'd be okay.
So remove walkability, or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that was not my intent, was to recommend something. It was really just a offer that we, uh, consider other, any valuable initiative. So, and then on page three, again, I was blathering about some positive updates on the Pickering barn, and I also stated that the Bowers farm may, I would say, be in the running rather than maybe where the barn ends up. We'll just leave it at that.
Anything else? Anyone? Okay.
I don't think so.
Can we get a motion for adopting the minutes from, with Pete's modifications, recommended modifications?
Make a motion that we adopt the minutes as amended?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. So council liaison, Kathy, would you mind, um, providing us an update and feedback and input?
I think the most, uh, the biggest thing that happened at council meeting, at least in my mind, was that they, we had, um, a lot of people show up again against the small cell poll being going up. We had a person come accident there who, in my mind, kind of confirmed that this isn't money-making, this is profit, you know, this is why they're doing this, and they would refuse to even consider putting a linear, a directional poll that would just go down thirteen. They definitely want to incorporate, they want to encompass the homes because their hope is that they'll get T-Mobile customers or from, from the, um, the poll itself, because that's what I got from it. They, after much discussion, they did agree to looking at another location that was further away, that was closer to Franklin Road. So I think that's where we're at right now, which we, I think everybody was grateful that they're willing to look at another location. Um, not that it's going to be better for the people that are closer to that location, but that's what they're willing to do. So, um, otherwise, I'll let you talk about anything else, there's nothing else was that memorable to me, but I do, anybody who, I wanted to let, um, everybody know that this, um, Franklin book is available, it's at the library, it's at the village offices here for anyone, it's free for anyone who is in Franklin, um, who is a resident, and one, one per family, and if anybody wants one today, I have them here. Um, so I just want to make sure that, that, anybody watching, everybody watching knows, and maybe somebody will come and take one, they're really good, so.
Kathy question about that? Is the, uh, so you know, in the past, we've always had our directory, um, it, does that, did, is there a way of having the directory online?
So for FCA members, if you become an FCA member, you will have access to all the FCA members' information, so phone numbers, addresses, how many children they have, everybody think, everything. So, I mean, right now, we unfortunately only have about three hundred members, we have eleven, over eleven hundred households, and the FCA only has about less, under three hundred families that are participating in the care and upkeep of our, of our beautiful park out here. And so, we don't have a lot of money, we really are really hurting, and we really need support because without money, how do we keep it up? You know, we could just plow one-third of the property, and, I mean, not plow, we could only cut the grass for one-third, I mean, that's, Jane keeps suggesting that we just show everybody what, what kind of money that we have, we don't have the money to do the whole thing, so maybe we should just do one-third.
Good point, I guess the, uh, so, so it, was it, was cost an issue with making it a directory again, or was it?
It was less, it was less, cost is the issue for making it, but it was the fact that whenever we did the directory, this is the FCA's project, by the way, not the government's, so I'm standing here, not just in my governmental role, but as the FCA. In the past, it always took, by the time that the directory was done, being published, it was already outdated, so, because by the time, and we'd have to go to every household and say, are you okay with your phone number and address being listed? And so you'd have to get the feedback from them, and this, the time that that would take, and the effort that that would take, and then on top of it, everybody's got ten thousand phone numbers now per family, and do we have the space in a book? The book would be so big. So we decided to keep it as an online directory for members, it gives the purpose, another, another benefit to being an FCA member, and, and really what we wanted to do, the purpose of this book, because this was done from the FCA and the Historic Society together, it was to let people know the history of Franklin, how it came to be, the special place that it is, and I think that once you understand the history, you have more of a connection, and then you have more of a reason to want to preserve it and keep it what, the way it is.
Yeah, no, it's great, thank you for doing it, it's a wonderful thing.
You're welcome.
Awesome, thanks Kathy. So, um, so nothing really much to add in addition to those, uh, those points from me, but, um, other than, we do have a few new agenda items, um, on our calendar that are direct correlation to feedback we receive from council. So, uh, one of the things that they'd like us to look into, and we'll talk about in B, is, in, in some cases, our village ordinances, um, can make it prohibitive for our, uh, four lots, so downtown lots, from being able to actually participate in a particular ordinance or rule, because this, the setbacks are too fa, too big, or, um, some, some other reasons. So unless the ordinance has been called, calls that, that district out specifically, um, then in some cases, they, they can't, um, they can't actually participate. So what council would like us to do, and we'll talk about in B more, but, is to see which ordinances, or discuss which ordinances are in those situations, and what we can do to at least, um, uh, if we, if there's a possibility to make a, make a, include them in the ordinance, and if it's a beneficial ordinance, um, then, then they can participate with the, with those, without just being excluded because they're in District R4. The other, other item that came as new on business is for burn, burn ordinance, with some clarity and clarifying, we've discussed this back earlier, this, I guess in May of twenty twenty-three, um, I think it was the last time we talked about it, and then we were told to hold off on it for a while, um, for updating the burn ordinance, and so that's come back to us as well, specifically about what is a bonfire, so.
What was the, uh, just now they have time to consider it?
No, um, it, it was, um, a villager reporting that a neighbor was, um, um, creating a large fire, um, and there was no social gathering or, or event that would warrant a bonfire, it was just burning leaves without a permit.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that was, um, that was the concern, is that it was classified as a bonfire, but didn't meet the criteria of the rest of the sentence. Um, and so they, he-
Yeah, I get it, obviously, we, we worked hard on that ordinance, um, you know, I, I know that, thirteen years, I know that this comes up all the time.
It does, every fall.
Pardon me?
Every fall.
Yeah, yeah, quite a bit, and so let's address it, but, yeah, all right.
We'll talk some more about it.
Yep.
Um, in addition, um, so I also had the opportunity to go to the Historic Commission last Wednesday, um, and discuss, um, to, talk about the sign, um, sign ordinance that the council's requested that we modify and update for municipal buildings, um, or municipal property. Um, I will say, um, they're, they're courteous, and they're eager to work with us on other topics, for sure. Um, this is not a popular topic, um, as you would, as you know, from October of last year, um, when they sent it, when they sent a memo to, um, Chris Susan, um, with regards to the input on, on, on a sign for, or electric sign in front of the village. So, um, their stance hasn't changed, but they are, but this isn't the only topic that they want to talk to us about, um, and they want to, um, continue to participate in our, uh, master plan discussions, because, um, our master plan impacts, impacts, um, the historic district, and their input is valuable. I believe that we received memos from them direct, um, occasionally on, for the master plan as well, but it's something that I think we can collaborate more on, and it's one of our goals as planning commission, um, though it wasn't the best topic to, um, start discussing with them, it is a topic, and so I'm looking forward to working with them close, more, more closely on other topics as well. And, um, I think that their input and consideration, especially when we're talking about historic district R4 lots, getting some input from them would be helpful, um, as well. So those are my, those are my main points I wanted to bring up, um, as, for, um, for this discussion, so commissioners, um, anything that you'd like to, to bring up?
What's the status of the master plan? I thought we were done with it and sent it off.
Unfortunately, it was, it has not been submitted, mainly she wanted to look at it in, in attempts to do the redevelopment district, so it's in, it's in their hands right now, I'm going from the beginning, okay, and then we send out.
Do, do they have a deadline?
No, I think this happens when tomorrow, find out, are they're done with it.
Because I think we, we finished with it two or three months ago, maybe?
And, I mean, and to your point, a master plan is a living document, we're putting a, a mile post in right now, but we should be starting the next version alre, already, so.
That's why this one's got to go out, it's got to go out to all the neighboring communities and go through the process, so.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, zoning?
No meeting.
No meeting, okay. Um, Sarah?
Um, no.
Next month either?
Okay.
Hmm, no real communication update, I have not received any word back from any council members on the communication update I provided, so my, I'm sort of waiting for more direction in order to do that.
So, so is this just asking permission if we can have, or have to pay for someone to?
No, so like I submitted, I went through everything that, I listened to all the public comments from all of the meetings, I listened to exactly what David asked for, I submitted a proposal to council, every council member to say, hey, this is my findings of, you want public comment somehow, online, these are three options, this is what we would need to do in order to do it. Even from David himself, who specifically asked for it, I have not heard back. I di, I didn't even hear that anyone actually got it, so I hope that it lives somewhere with them, but I just haven't heard anything back, so I'm assuming that it's just sort of done the water for now.
Are you able to attend council meeting with me next month?
I am, I don't enjoy those meetings, I find them to be very, like I wa, I was watching the last one, and it like makes my blood pressure go up, it is not enjoyable, um, but I will.
Okay.
Um, but yes, I-
We can give you a Xanax.
Might need a, or drink, but yeah. I think for me, it's just, when they specifically ask for something, and then we give it to them, and then we don't hear anything back for multiple weeks, then it becomes, did you really want this? I put a lot of work into it, or is this just you saying that you want it in order to say that you did it? And I think for me, the intention is what I'm starting to really worry about, is if the follow-through isn't there.
Okay, well, we, we have it on our agenda every month, so, um, because we don't want it to go away, it was one of our goals.
I know, but.
So, so, um, if there's more support that, that, that we should be providing on this, then we really need to be doing it, to push it forward. So, we don't want it to be just on your shoulders, we're a council, uh, we're, we're a commission, and, um-
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go, go ahead Pete.
I was just going to say, so the communications that you've sent to them, um, maybe we've seen them already, um, but if you could send them to each of us, too.
Okay.
All right.
I think I, it was in last month's report, and I've sent it to Dana, I got all of her input, like I wanted to make sure that we were doing it thoughtfully, and so it was presented in a way of, here's everything, and the legal committee did review it before that, I think, the month before it.
Well, it, it wasn't on their agenda, so they didn't put it on there from legal committee, so it's one of those things that sometimes we do submit things, it doesn't get put on their agenda, and maybe, and maybe what hap, needs to happen is the feedback, say, hey, it went to legal, we're not putting it on this month, we're considering it for the following month, and then that way you don't feel like it's in limbo.
Or even just, we got it, would be great.
Understood.
Like, just making sure the village email systems work it, like just something of, hey, we asked for this, we appreciate that you put in the work, I think it's just-
Fair enough.
Nice.
Fair enough.
No, it's true, I guess the, um-
Improved communication, I got you.
Roger.
Which is the whole point.
I think the, uh, yes, a lot of this stuff, you know, I find that to be the case, it disappears. I mean, obviously, the, the village council is, they have a lot of things on their plate, a lot of stuff to run, um, but yeah, I agree, in your last final days, Roger, if you could let us know what's going on, where, where, where have our communications disappeared to? I'm just kidding, you don't have to do that.
Good thing.
But I, but I get it, um, and I, you know, your, your, your point is taken, and, um-
It's just funny that it's about communication.
Maybe, yeah, it, there's a lot of irony, yeah, yeah, and our ability to communicate with ourselves, um, and understand what's going on, but, um, yeah, I think it's something we can all work on, too.
Pete, would you like to continue with, uh, and the Pickering barn?
Certainly, so, um, we're continuing to dismantle the Pickering barn, and developing a plan to take it down, sort of a three, three-phase process until the timber framers come out. Um, you know, we have a private benefactor who's going to help us get it down, um, we've extended our patronicity campaign until the fourth, um, fourth of October. I did talk with Marsha Gersonson last week, on Saturday, I talked to her for a little while, uh, she fully believes in the process and would love to give us funding. She does want a commitment from the village, hopefully that's something that, um, we can try to make happen, um, and I hope that everyone will, will put some brain power on the possibility of having it, you know, I'm working hard still on the, the, the public-private partnership potential, uh, the farm stop business model, which is a proven model, and they're opening up more and more. Um, one of my good friends has three of them going in in Arbor right now, and he would gladly come and teach, teach how to do it. It is a non, his, his stores are nonprofit stores, um, we could have a, uh, an easement, a facade easement, a property easement that would allow us to care for the building, would still have it be operated by private individuals, um, but in, in, as a, as a, as the other alternative is having it on village property, um, I also just think it could be a, you know, tremendous boon and positive thing for the village, um, and it's really, and I guess, you know, ha, having its day in court, so to speak, where serious thought has got into it, where you really say, you know, could it be a good thing, could it be a positive thing? Um, we have all these young families moving in, um, I think they want places like that to be able to go, and, and potential for having concerts in the barn, weddings in the barn, um, there's just a lot, a lot of potential for it. And then third, the third option being the Bowers farm location, um, where, you know, we're talking with Danny Walsh, Supervisor Bloomfield Township, you know, and Jeros runs Bowers Farm, um, would, would they be willing to take it? And that certainly is in the running as well, um, you know, in my heart, I'd love to see it here stay in Franklin, I think it has a much closer link to Franklin. And finally, I'll just say how great it was to have Bill Pickering come in, the people from the Pickering family, uh, he rode in the wagon as we went through our Labor Day parade, and there were probably six or seven, um, and Roger, maybe he knew some of these people out there, as part of the, uh, you know, not only was there a Franklin school reunion, which Roger had the pleasure of attending, class of?
Sixty-four.
So class of, and I think that Tom Cook, I think probably was earlier than you, did you know Tom?
I think Jim and Janie, they were in my class.
So, you know, they're, and Peter Green, I think he's probably the reigning-
Pete was, uh, in the class with my brothers, older brothers.
Older brothers, right, he still lives on Carroll Avenue, so, you know, you, the, families came in, there were, there were Krieger families there, Pickering family, Adams was, uh, who was originally Bingham, Bingham, um, area, Browden was here, Herb Browden, we sit in the Browden house, his great-great-grandfather, um, and it was wonderful, it's wonderful, this deep history and bringing everyone together, um, so I guess I wanted to throw that in.
I also want to commend Pete, because I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to see the amazing and eloquent interview that he did on local CBS News, but he blew me away. He really, I, I think he needs his own talk show now.
You wouldn't like seltzer, maybe, but yeah, we're, yeah, I'll be sending it for us.
That's right. No, you did, you did an amazing job on that.
Well, thank you. Yeah, if you want to go look at it, I think it's out there somewhere.
It's out there.
I mean, she posted it on their Facebook, I commented that I was proud to know you, it was, it was really well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Pete, can I just get clarification? I-
I, I still wonder, and still, it's not, it's not entirely clear to me, like, kinda like, that, so the private person is purchased, is willing to pay for the barn to be taken apart?
Right.
Does he then get control to decide where that goes and ultimately?
I think it puts him in the driver's seat, you know, the, I've, I've been trying to encourage him to, to, you know, contribute to our patronicity campaign with funds. And then we can treat it as a partnership and everyone's working together. So, uh, you know, I think he's being open-minded and respectful of all the work that's been done. And to be honest, he's been involved since the earliest days. He said, he told Marsha, Marsha Gersonson, he said, call Pete Allen. So, um, you know, I, I'm working hard.
So what I guess I'm just still trying to, so if he's willing to pay for the barn to be taken apart, he gets to ultimately decide where it goes and hopefully we'll keep it here. But the patronicity is trying to get money then to put forth then the effort to really put it somewhere? Like the money we're gonna use in order to get money from Marsha Gersonson, which is Bloomfield Hills? Is that what she, is she open?
Oakland County.
She's Oakland County.
She's Oakland County.
Yeah, she's a commissioner in Oakland County.
Right, right, so she, I think I, she's mine, I think I know her much better. But my question, the, the money for the patronicity is specifically for?
Saving the barn.
But the barn?
It's quite general.
I understand that it's, I, I'm trying to, I wanna get clarity though, because if he's going to save the barn and put it aside, it is to, for us then to use that money to put it back up?
He's augmenting. He's augmenting what the amount is in the patronicity campaign, correct?
So, I mean, it is private money, um, but the, he, he has, you know, he understands that we've been working on this. So he's not saying it's, um, you know, he's not saying this is where it's gonna go or anything like that. You know, and it gives, it gives, put, it gives us time. You know, the builder has said, you've got until spring now to get it down. We still hope to get it down before winter. But it gives, in general, there is more time. In our task force, we outlined a two to three-year period, once the barn is safe and down, to develop all this.
Yeah.
So I think that's the best way to look at it. But obviously, he starts gaining more control, you know, as he does it.
Pete, the, the patronicity campaign is not different. They're raising money for the same thing that he is donating for. I think that's Kathy's question. That, that, you know, I mean.
And you know, each party comes with, you know, obviously my heart is here in Franklin. He may be more inclined, more directed toward Bloomfield. So there's that, there's that component of it.
We originally had talked about putting out information and asking the public about if they would be willing to, for example, you know.
We talked to council about that and they didn't.
It was never something that we were able to put forward.
They said, we just want location and cost.
We, we even came up with the, the survey that we would send out and they, it was brought back, and we don't want this, very clearly.
But it's such a missing piece that is, right? That if you can find that you have support for it in the community, that people want a community center, that people want a place to have weddings and have celebrations, and they want a large space to have council meetings and whatever.
Right.
There may be more pulled for it. I mean, you could have, again, you could have a teen center, you could have.
Right, we knew.
You'd have so many things that could come out of it right here. But if people don't know about it, how do we get the word out to really, this is what we're, one option.
Right.
Yeah, communications.
Box two, yeah. Couldn't quite get through to that.
Thank you, Pete, for the update. And, and we'll continue to continue to update this.
Let me stop talking for a minute.
No, it's, 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 we're now more than an update, we're plan, making plans.
Oh.
So if we wanna add it to the agenda to put it, to do a bigger plan discussion, then we can do that too.
All right, yeah, I guess. I wouldn't mind doing that. You know, I do think the planning commission can play a role in it. And I guess if, um, oh, you know, I don't know if you want me to make a motion to have it added to the, to the agenda.
For later tonight, we can?
I wasn't gonna do that, no.
No, for, for later?
From the next meeting.
Oh, we can, let's, let's talk about it for next meeting.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Okay, thanks for the time, yep.
Do you have any other updates though? Like, update like what the progress is? Sounds like it's, there's someone that's gonna help, help us to take it down and then we have time to store it. And then we have a patronicity extension, but there's any, until October 4th?
Those are key, key things.
All right.
I was in the barn last week. There's a lot of crap in there. Is Terry gonna get it out or?
Yeah, yeah. Put it in the basement for now, yep.
Okay, thank you. Budget and expenses report. So thank you for adding, uh, June and July. August obviously hasn't come through yet, right? So waiting on that. It looks like we closed the year out with a little less than $6,000 from last year. I mean, that's to Pete's point from last meeting. You know, when that money goes back rolled into the general fund, I'm assuming, um, when it doesn't get used for the calendar year?
That's right. It just goes into the fund balance and is allocated for the following year.
Okay.
And it may, you know, there's, there's not a tag on each specific dollar. There is a line that you're entitled to out of the pool that represents your budget. And at the end of the year, what that, that you haven't spent goes back into that pool that is part of what's divided amongst everybody.
Right.
I see our budget went down from 26,000 to 21,500. So our budget was reduced by $4,500.
I think that's probably right.
Yeah, so $2,000 was for a Pickering barn that we had requested money from the village mid-year. Which, you know, as we make progress taking the barn down and we start making more plans, then we can request that, those funds again. And then, um, and then also a reduction into, um, reduction from, um, the master plan. So we didn't, um, I guess we're not expecting to do a whole lot this year for the master plan. So, um, yeah, and then also reduction in engineering costs as well, it looks like, so.
It does seem like that's the lowest figure I've ever seen, 21,500.
Yeah, normally it's been around 25 or so, but.
I don't recall a conversation about that, but the fact that there was $6,000, uh, remaining at a time when everybody was looking for places to make reductions.
Understood.
There was, right.
Understood. Yeah, well, and if we need it, we need it, we can request it, right? So.
That's absolutely true.
And I guess the, uh, so just to comment on, on budget, budget-related stuff. You know, it does, feels good to help the village balance its budget. But I noticed, you know, one of the things the HDC did, um, when we went to the meeting, they had had an hour and a half training, training, um, session. And, um, you know, that is the kinda thing that I think returns a lot of, a lot of benefits. We, we had some funds left over and maybe next year, when we're getting toward the end, if we have an opportunity like that, might be something we could consider.
Mm-hmm, yep. That's a good idea, Pete. Okay. Any other comments on budget and expenses? Okay. So, um, at this point, um, we move to public comments. We have one participant, one other person that's here for the public. And, um, thank you for coming. And so we're gonna move, so the next topic is gonna be sign ordinance or any other topics that are further down the list. If you have an additional comment topic that's not already on our agenda, you're more than welcome to make a public comment now. Or if, if you wanted to wait for that, um, topic, pick 'em up, you're more than welcome to make a comment then.
It depends, how, how do you wanna organize it? I'm happy to share the HDC's position on, um, carve-out and sign idea now or add to your discussion later?
Do you mind adding it to the discussion later? But do you want to, uh, do you have anything though from HDC other than sign that you would like to say or?
Just a thanks that you came to our, our meeting and, um, I'm here to reciprocate and, uh, thank you for letting us know about the issue. And, and Chairman Roberts asked that I be here tonight to talk to you all.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? I don't think there's anyone else here. Okay, so we'll move to, um, the next point of business, which is consider sign ordinance, um, for municipal use only. I think we have guests here that are specifically want to share and present some ideas with regards to signage that might accommodate for, be accommodated, um, might help our village. Would you please introduce yourself? And I guess, Chris, would you like to as well introduce them and kinda the goal?
Yeah, this is Steve Ames from Johnson Sign. I can't remember where I encountered Johnson Sign Company from, but I think it actually was, uh, my wife who, uh, had worked with them in the past and, and, uh, they were a reputable sign company. And so I contacted them, uh, quite a while ago when this first came up. And I asked them for some information. They were kind enough to, uh, provide me with quite a bit of information. And so at the last month's meeting, uh, where it became clear that there was a need for more information, we talked about possibly getting somebody in to come in and provide that information. And, um, I contacted them again and they were gracious enough to come tonight and, and actually bring out display. And, um, they have a lot of information that, uh, certainly I don't have the knowledge to give to you. And, uh, so please, uh, throw a lot of questions at them and I'm sure they'll give you a lot of information.
Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely. Thanks for having us here tonight. And, you know, we could spend an hour here or two hours or three, but I, you know, I know we wanna summarize as quickly as we can. And, uh, the unit, I think everybody's had a chance to see this digital unit out here. It's a top-of-the-line product. This is a six-millimeter resolution product, which is as high a resolution that's available on the marketplace. That number six represents the distance between the LED pixels. So the lower the number, the, the more pixels, the better the resolution. Uh, the numbers range anywhere from six to 24. So what we're looking at here is a six-millimeter. Uh, our preferred digital sign vendor is the Think Sign Company. Very, very reputable, fantastic service, great product. We feel it's the best value in the marketplace, in the digital space. Uh, we do also sell Daktronics and Watchfire. But again, our preferred vendor is Think Sign. And so, um, we fa- we fabricate all types of signage and install all types of signage at Johnson Sign. We have five locations. And, uh, you know, based on some specs that Chris gave me, I've taken the liberty of doing a rendering and some quotes. Uh, you know, not to come in and, and do a hard sell, although we always are willing to do business, but more to give you an idea of costs and so forth. And I know the, the village sign ordinance, uh, limits the overall square footage to 24 square feet, six-foot height. We're looking at, um, you know, installing somewhere out in front here on the lawn and, uh, or, or next door, wherever that may be, but, you know, ideally is, is close to Franklin Road as the setback would allow. So I will pass a few of these out. Didn't bring enough for everybody, but perhaps three of you can share on each side.
Uh, yeah, we can check.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
And, uh, here, here is a proposal.
Take these folks out on a face, face tour and show some of the different dynamics of how that sign works?
Sure, but we can, you know, we're happy to step outside for a few minutes and show you some of the specifications if you're so inclined to take that time. And, um, so.
You, okay, to do a quick field trip?
Sure.
Do we have to, um?
Are we allowed, are we able to do that with the? Okay, all right. I'm sorry, go ahead. Al, what was your question?
No, I said, do we have to pause the meeting in order to go outside?
You're still meeting?
Still meeting.
Yeah.
Still meeting.
Yeah.
Very close. Yes, we could easily do that. Again, we, you know, this is just for, you know, comparison sake and, you know, just something that we had our artists do, to maximizing the square footage. And, but yes, we can customize and do wooden frames however, you know.
How about the, you know, one of our concerns is that it be too gaudy, that there be a lot of motion in it, we'll say. Scrolling specifically is a concern that this would be. So is there a mode that is, have you ever had different communities where you put them in that are not quite as, you know, commercial looking?
Absolutely. And most municipalities, their ordinance does not allow motion. And so they want still, one transition to the next, still. That's all completely controllable. And, you know, we just kind of show you the.
The best features.
The bells and whistles, just to show you the capabilities. There are some animations that have a little bit of subtle movement, like you have an American flag that has just a little waving.
I mean, I know we can control.
And there's like a snowman one where his arms just moving a little bit. There's Fourth of July, fireworks going and, you know.
So the concern, I think, is.
But you control all of them.
See, that's the thing. Obviously, we're not computer programmers. Dana is not a computer programmer. And that it be, you know, simple, put it into the mode that we primarily want, simple information conveyed.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, and then my next question is just.
And Pete, if I could also just butt in for a second. It's like a PowerPoint presentation where you control the slide. Dana will know exactly what's on the slideshow.
Fair enough. How about communities that you put them in? Can you share, have you had a historic community where you installed a sign like this, or other community near us that might be an example?
Well, I know Flat Rock has signs like this. I'm trying to think of, Jeff, what did you work with municipality-wise?
Yeah.
Yeah, Birmingham Public Schools.
Sure. No, I, you know.
Many of the public, yeah, many of the public schools. From a municipality standpoint, recent installs have been in Fenton, Flushing, Saginaw, East Point.
Are they typically in front of municipal buildings?
They are. They are.
Other than school?
I'd have a difficult time telling you that there's any kind of comparison to Franklin with any of those communities. So, you know, you're in a very unique situation here, and we're respectful of that. So I would work very closely to make sure you got on the right path should you decide to do an electronic sign. Because that's important. I understand you don't want to upset the apple cart.
Did we get any, Stuart, did we get any indication from council on how much they have budgeted for this?
That, no. I mean, they, they're, Roger?
I think that's in a reserve. It sort of has not been allocated because it hasn't been decided yet to do it, but there is some money in the budget that could be drawn upon if that were necessary.
But we're not tasked to design it to meet a certain budget.
The issue is, in front of planning, the issue is getting resolved whether or not you can even have one. And the decision about whether to acquire it and how much to spend for it is the council's.
Oh, I understand that.
Well, and that's why I said that they hadn't spent time doing that, because there has not been an approval. And clearly, we have some disagreement amongst our appointees in various spots who believe we should not that way. So that all needs to be resolved. And at that point, if and when that occurs, then I'm sure there'll be a really healthy discussion about what it is that we get.
Okay. Fair enough.
There, that's a good summary. Any more questions for friends here? So I do have a few questions. I know that we're not tasked with cost necessarily, but beautiful sign, but is there a standard, like, service fee that, monthly or annual?
It's lifetime of the sign. 4G cellular communication. You're going to get software updates. ThinkSign proprietary software. They're always adding, in fact, they will take requests if you have a particular project or, you know, they're very user-friendly.
Okay.
But no, this is a bottom line out the door.
Okay.
Is there a warranty with it?
Five years, yes.
And then another question I had is, I mean, I know that we're, well, I know that we've maximized as much of the dimension as possible, but I would imagine there are situations, though, where you don't want a sign that big based on location or amount of data or text. What other size options are available for the same 6-millimeter?
You could go a foot shorter, top to bottom, so you could go down to 25 inches tall by this six-foot four wide. I think that would be as small as you would really want to go. That would allow you to put out two good rows of text in that. And also, quite frankly, you know, a 10-millimeter, I think, is okay, too. And just so you know, price-wise, if you were to go to a two, we'd call that a two-by-six, 10-millimeter, you'd be in the $13,000 range.
Okay.
On that EMC.
Instead of a 21?
Correct. So that would be the range. I would say this one is as big, you know, as big as you can get based on the ordinance as it is. But, you know, just from a utilization, you know, you could go to a two-by-six, and I think you'd do pretty well. And that would give us a little more time on the top, a little more room on that top part.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, because one of the, you know, we have a 25 mile an hour road, so it's not like you're passing by a high school at 40 miles an hour outside of school. And so, you know, text dimensioning.
Understood. But when you get to the two-foot, you know, you are really, you're looking more to be more text-oriented. It's not going to be as image-friendly.
And, yeah, understood, understood. Okay.
Just, even though we're not doing this today, you said there's a five-year warranty on this?
Yes.
The proposal says three.
You know, okay, that's our Johnson Sign. That's our standard three-year. That's in our small print at the bottom right here. Yeah, that, we will change that if we move forward. We will change that to five years.
Okay.
That's on our non-digital products, that's the standard contract, so.
All right. Any other questions from planning? No? Okay. So, thank you. I appreciate your time. And showing that, showing us the sign as well as the different options for those that weren't able to join us outside, please come to our meetings. We do field trips now.
Who brought the cookies?
That's right. So, thank you. And at this time, I think we can open up to public comments as well, to, or we can, actually, Chris, if you don't mind, actually, I think it might make more sense for you to go through your memo from August 23rd and open up for public comments after you've kind of given us an idea where we are. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
I'll leave a little more information on this in some of my.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So, before you leave, actually, would you have more questions for them in your public comments? Okay. Okay, then, in that case, you don't need to sit around. Thank you for saying as late as you have.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Chris, I'll be following up.
Roger, nice to meet you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Well, some of the stuff that is in my August 23rd letter, we've already covered this evening. But some of the features of the sign that would be essential would be the zoning requirements. One sign is permitted per parcel. No single sign's surface shall exceed 24 square feet, as was mentioned. No single dimension shall exceed six feet. Required minimum setback from any road right-of-way line is five feet, and the maximum height is eight feet. And then.
Taking out the space and replacing it with wood posts and open underneath.
Sure.
So similar to this picture that we have, right?
Right.
Very close, yes. We could easily do that. Again, we, you know, this is just for, you know, comparison sake and, you know, just something that we had our artists do, to maximizing the square footage. And, but yes, we can, we can customize and do wooden frames however, you know.
How about the, you know, one of our concerns is that it be too gaudy, that there be a lot of motion in it, we'll say. Scrolling specifically is a concern that this would be. So, is there a mode that is, have you ever had different communities where you put them in that are not quite as, you know, commercial looking?
Absolutely. And, and most municipalities, their ordinance does not allow motion. And so they want still, um, one, one transition to the next, still. That's all completely controllable. And, you know, we just kind of show you the,
The best features.
The bells and whistles, just to show you the capabilities.
Typically.
There are some animations that have a little bit of subtle movement, like you have an American flag that,
I mean, I know we can control.
Just a little waving and, there's like a snowman one where his arms just moving a little, but there's, there's Fourth of July. You have fireworks going and, you know.
Okay, so the concern, I think, is, um,
But you control all of them.
See, that's the thing. Obviously, we, we're not computer programmers. Dana is not a computer programmer. And that it be, um, you know, simple, put it into the mode that we primarily want, simple information conveyed.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, and then my next question is just-
And Pete, if I could also just butt in for a second, it's like a, like a PowerPoint presentation where you, you control the slide. You, Dana will know exactly what's on the slide show.
Fair enough. How about communities that you've put them in? Can you share, have you had a historic community where you installed a sign like this, or other community near us that might be an example?
Well, I know, I know, um, Flat Rock, um, has, has signs like this. I'm trying to think of, Jeff, what don't you, what have you worked with municipality wise?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, Birmingham Public Schools.
Sure. No, I, 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 you know, museum.
Yeah, many of the public schools, from a municipality standpoint, uh, recent installs have been in Fenton, Flushing, um, Saginaw, um, East Point.
Are they typically in front of municipal buildings?
They are, they are.
Other than school?
I'd have a difficult time telling you that there's any kind of comparison to Franklin with any of those communities. So, you know, you're in a very unique situation here and we're respectful of that. So, I, I would work very closely to make sure you got on the right path should you decide to do an electronic sign. Because that's important. I, I understand you don't want to upset the apple cart.
Did we get, um, any, Stuart, did we get any indication from council on how much they have budgeted for this?
Um, that, no. I mean, they, they're, Roger?
I think that's in a reserve, that it sort of, um, has not been allocated because it hasn't been decided yet to do it. But there, there is some money in the budget that could be drawn upon if that were necessary.
But we're not, we're not tasked to design it to meet a certain budget.
The issue was, for the, in front of planning, the issue is getting resolved whether or not you can even have one. And, and the decision about whether to acquire it and how much to spend for it is the council's.
Oh, I understand that, but-
Well, and, and that's why I said that they hadn't spent time doing that, because there has not been an approval. And clearly, we have, uh, some disagreement amongst our, um, appointees in various spots who believe we should not that way. So, that all needs to be resolved. And at that point, if and when that occurs, then I'm sure there'll be a really healthy discussion about what it is that we get.
Okay, fair enough.
There, that's a good summary. Any more questions for, for friends here? So I do have a few questions. Um, I know that we're not tasked with, with cost necessarily, but, um, beautiful sign, but is there, is there a standard, like, service fee that, monthly or annual, or, okay?
It's lifetime of the sign, 4G cellular communication, you're going to get software updates for, it's, uh, things I proprietary software. They're always adding, in fact, they will take requests if you have a particular, um, project or, you know, they, they, you know, they're very user friendly.
Okay.
But no, no, this is a bottom line out the door.
Okay.
Is there a warranty with it?
Five years, yes.
Um, and then another question I had is, I mean, I, I know that we're, well, I know that we've max, you've maximized as much of the dimension as possible, but, I would imagine there are situations though where you don't want a sign that big based on location or amount of data or text. Um, what other size options are available for the same six millimeter?
You could, you could go a, a foot shorter, uh, top to bottom. So you could go down to 25 inches tall by this six foot four wide. I think that would be as small as you would really want to go. That would allow you to put out two good rows of text in that. And also, quite frankly, you know, you, a 10 millimeter, I think, is okay too. And just so you know, price wise, if you were to go to a two, we'd call that a two by six, uh, 10 millimeter, you'd be in the $13,000 range.
Okay.
On that EMC.
Instead of a 21?
Correct. So that, that would be the range. I would say this one is, is as big, you know, as, as big as you can get based on the ordinance as it is. But, you know, just from a utilization, you're, you know, you could go to a two by six, and I think you'd do pretty well. And that would give us a little more time on the top, a little more room on that top part.
Okay, um, yeah, because one of the, you know, we have a 25 mile an hour road, so it's not like you're passing by a high school at 40 miles an hour outside of school. Um, and so, you know, text dimensioning.
Understood. It, but when you get to the two foot, you know, you are really, you're looking more to be more text oriented. Uh, it's not going to be as image friendly.
And, and, yeah, understood, understood. Okay.
Just, uh, even though we're not doing this today, uh, you said there's a five year warranty on this?
Yes.
The proposal says three.
Um, you know, okay, that's our Johnson sign, uh, that's our standard three year. That's in our small print at the bottom right here. Yeah, that, we will change that if we move forward. We will change that to five years. That's on our non-digital products, that's a standard contract, so.
Any other questions from planning? No? Okay. So, thank you. I appreciate your time. Um, and, um, and showing that, showing us the sign as well as the different options. For those that weren't able to join us outside, please come to our meetings. We do field trips now.
Who brought the cookies?
That's right. Uh, so, thank you. Um, and I, at this time, um, I think we can open up to public comments as well, um, to, to, or we can, actually, Chris, you, if you don't mind, um, actually, I think it might make more sense for you to go through your memo from August 23rd and open up for public comments after you've kind of given us an idea where we are. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
I'll leave, uh, a little more information on this in some of my comments.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Very much.
So, before you, before you, before you leave, actually, would you have more questions for them, um, from, in your public comments? Okay, okay, then, in that case, you don't need to stick around for, thank you for, thank you for saying as late as you have.
Thank you for your time. Chris, I'll be following that. Roger, nice to meet you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Well, um, some of the stuff that, uh, is in my August 23rd letter, we've already covered this evening. But, uh, some of the features, uh, of the sign that would be essential would be, um, the zoning requirements. Uh, one sign is permitted per parcel. No single sign's surface shall exceed 24 square feet, as was mentioned. No single dimension shall exceed six feet. Required minimum setback from any road right of way line is five feet and the maximum height is eight feet. And, um, then, um, I, uh, put together some other stuff that I thought was essential to have for the sign. For example, the fixed portion would have the village logo and the village of Franklin and possibly the address and permanent lettering. Um, we would need to specify what the color of the permanent, uh, portion of the sign would be. And then, um, in terms of the EMC, we've pretty much discussed, uh, the aspects of that. One thing that, um, um, in terms of this six millimeter, some of my research, um, showed that, uh, the closer you get, the, um, smaller the, the millimeter you need. So, for example, if you're a pedestrian and you're close to the sign, a six millimeter sign is better than a larger millimeter sign. So, um, in this situation where we might have pedestrians viewing the sign as well as people dri, driving by on Franklin Road, uh, the six millimeter might be better than the 10 millimeter.
But it sounds again like we're not, we're not here to decide, to design the sign today and pick out the specifications. We're here to determine whether or not it should be permitted.
Right.
Yeah, and the question also is, where would you put it if you, if it was permitted? Because with a lot of the sign discussion, we've spent a lot of time talking about where. And I would think that that's relevant here.
Right. In terms of village code revisions, um, on page two of our letter, uh, first of all, the definitions would be, um, it would be necessary to revise the definitions to, uh, include the definition of electric, electronic message center sign. And then, um, uh, in section 1474.14 illumination, um, right now, uh, the ordinance says that signs, uh, shall be illuminated only by a steady stationary shielded electric light source directed solely at the sign. Uh, so we would have to revise, uh, that particular section. And that can be done very easily by, uh, just adding the words except for permitted EMC signs. And then, um, in, uh, section 1474.18, non-residential district signs, um, we would have to, uh, deal with the issue of permitting an EMC sign. And, um, we would want to do that in a way that you wouldn't have EMC signs all up and down Franklin Road. And, um, so I've, uh, proposed some language, uh, that would permit them on village-owned property in the public institutional district, subject to the requirements set forth in section 1474.18. So I think that would accomplish that. So you would, in essence, end up with one EMC sign. And then, uh, item four is the, uh, elephant in the room, so to speak. And that's the Historic District Commission authority. And, um, we discussed this at the, uh, last meeting, that the, um, Historic District Commission has the authority to approve all signs in the historic district. And, um, they have a, um, signage guidelines that was, uh, prepared by the village of Franklin that, um, basically, uh, does not support the use of changeable copy signs, especially electronic signs. And, um, the way to address that, I present three options. I'm sure none of them are particularly, um, appeal, uh, none of them probably appeal to the Historic District Commission, but I'll put them forth anyway. Uh, one would be to amend the sign, signage guidelines. That would have to be undertaken by the HTC, since the signage guidelines are their product. Uh, option two would be to add an approval exception in section 1474-04 subsection C2C. In this particular section, there already is, um, uh, an exception for certain types of signs. And so, you would simply, um, add another exception for EMC signs, uh, erected in the public interest on village-owned property. So that's another option. And option three is to, uh, for the village council to, uh, simply declare the EMC sign on village-owned property to be necessary for the public health, safety and welfare pursuant to, um, uh, let's see, um, section 1474.04 subsection C2C. Uh, it gives the, um, village council that authority to do that. So that would be, um, without the need for any, uh, sign amendments whatsoever. The, uh, village council would have that authority to simply make that declaration if they wanted to do that. So, those are three options.
Not to?
Pardon?
Have they chosen not to?
Those options haven't been explained to the council at this point.
Right. Can I ask just a, just a procedural question, um, with regards to submitting ordinances to council? Is it acceptable to provide options like this to council with the amended ordinance and the wording with regards to allowing EMC? So they could choose which option they would like to?
I think that that's highly appropriate, uh, as long as you, as a planning commission, make a recommendation as to what you prefer.
Okay.
So in this scenario, we are specifically looking at one, two, three here because we really don't have, we can recommend one of four, but that's what we're really working on. Our meet right now is just one, two, three, and then recommend one of the options for four. Okay, I just wanted to clear.
I don't, I don't think you have to be feeling as though you're in a position where you've come to an conclusion that everybody's happy with. I think you do the best you can with what you've got.
Is there also an option four to put it somewhere that's not in the historic district?
Well, that, sure, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
That's possible. Uh, there's a piece of village property along Franklin Road that is not in the district, uh, that would be manageable from here.
So I think that should be added, certainly as option four.
Well, um, basically in front of the police department.
To the, in line with the police department house facing on Franklin Road, uh, in the grassy area.
Right.
I mean, that would be municipal.
It's fully owned.
I guess, are there any other places it could go in an easement? You know, like we have our, at our borders, we have our signs, say you're entering Franklin.
Right. I think the, as we've talked about this with the council, we've talked about having something out in front of the village office. As a part of this municipal complex.
Right, and how about something on Telegraph Road or?
Putting it out there.
That would be a change from municipal, uh, is there a municipal property owned by the village on Telegraph?
Right, and we really can't just plop it in an easement or anything. So how do we do the signs, our village boundary signs?
They're in our right of way.
Right, so if it's in the right of way.
Yeah, and if it's in the right of way, you were about to make the same point, I was thinking, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, if it's in the right of way, I, I mean, I'm just trying to understand the distinction. If we do have the right to put it anywhere, uh, anywhere, what other areas in the village do we have a legal right to put it? You know, for instance, at our borders, we have signs, apparently we have the right to put those signs there. Are there other, if you wanted to put it on Telegraph Road, where, you know?
It said, it says here though, I mean, you had mentioned it, or requirement, minimum requirement setback is any, from any road right of way line is five feet. Does that, does that mean outside the right of way, it's five feet, right?
Correct.
It's the same thing that comes up with the, the sign, um, signs we have during, um, election season. You can't put your sign in the right of way.
Maybe the signs, the, uh, welcome to the village signs are considered like street signs.
Okay.
Aren't they?
Yeah.
And so they fit into a different category.
That, that, oh, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. So, um, before we have more discussion as a commission, is okay if we allow for public comment as well?
Sure, hi, I'm the elephant in the room.
You don't look like one.
I'm Laura Wade. I'm, uh, Historic District Commissioner. And, uh, Gary Roberts asked that I be here tonight, but I wanted to come anyway, just to hear more about the sign and, and some of the plans that were, uh, be made in some of the discussions. So, um, I don't know if you just want me to kind of share with you what the Historic District Commission has discussed about this back in October? And then, more recently, when Mr. Wooders came and, uh, talked to us during public comment. Basically, uh, the way we look at it is, um, you know, Franklin is in the details. The beauty and the unique nature of our village is in the details. And adding, um, something as modern as an LED sign really works against those details, against the master plan. And specifically, where signs are discussed, um, I didn't really count, but I, you know, I kind of went through the master plan just to see what some of the goals were with respect to signage. And, to be frank, it, it's in there in multiple places. Because signs are an integral part of every community, um, whether we want them there or not. And they provide some of the detail that, that, um, lots of people have spent thousands of hours talking about in terms of developing the master plan, the streetscape, and the things that make Franklin Franklin. And I know there's been a lot of argument about that and there's been controversy, but, um, plopping a giant TV, whether it's by a road, whether it's at the gateway of Franklin at 13 and Franklin, or, you know, down the road there or at the other end of Franklin, really sets a tone about our village. And, um, we recognize as, as commissioners that we have a responsibility to all of you and, and the rest of everyone who lives in Franklin to protect the integrity of the unique nature of our village. And not to be hysterical about it, but we've all worked really hard to keep things rural feeling, quiet feeling. And a sign like this works against that. It works against, um, the master plan. It works against the US Secretary of the Interior, uh, standards that we apply, um, that we have to apply when we look at modifications and renovations that people want to do in the village. So something like this is, is really, uh, huge. I mean, it really blows a hole through a lot of, you know, what we've worked hard to do, um, you know, for, as, as long as the Historic District Commission has been a commission. I haven't been on it that long, but, um, in any case. So in terms of the goals of the master plan, um, there is a signage section. It's on page 14 of the, and I, I don't know, we're, I guess you're updating the master plan or someone is. Um, but the, uh, 2015, uh, update specifically mentions the policies with respect to the signage. And, um, triple B and triple C specifically say, um, uh, that businesses are encouraged to use creative, but understated, signs to identify and advertise. And frankly, we're not aware of why or how the municipal offices should be treated any differently than the businesses that are held to that standard in our village. So that's one policy that would be violated, um, and really cast aside by bringing in an LED sign to the village. Triple C says maintain a sign ordinance based on best practices to ensure signs in Franklin Village reflect the rural character and the high level of achievement of Franklin residents. Again, um, I don't want to be repetitive, but that is, you know, something that, again, a lot of people have worked hard to achieve here. In Franklin, and a lot of people have moved here for those reasons. I mean, I'm from northern Michigan. I specifically sought out Franklin because of the trees, because of the lack of commercialism and, um, you know, the understated, uh, ambiance of the community. So, um, with respect to the gateways, uh, again, the gateways, if, if you move the sign close to the, you know, the beautiful carved signs that we have at both ends of the village, um, you know, it kind of mars the, the sense of arrival that you have when you get to Franklin. You know, a sort of a big TV sitting there and, um, so, um, that would be another reason. For us on the HTC, um, we deal a lot with issues with respect to precedent. So if you allow one person to do something, it makes it harder to argue that the next person doesn't get to do it. And we deal with tracks, okay? That's what we deal with. But, it, you know, a sign like this, once a business is trying to make money, and they should, sees a sign like this, they're gonna, they're, they may or may not be aware that there's a carve-out in, in the sign ordinance, they're going to want a sign too. So, I think that's going to create some chaos to some extent. A little bit of, uh, I think animosity is probably too strong of a word, but some questions. And then we're going to have to deal with that. So, um, selfishly, um, we like, we like to have a standard and that no one is, um, above that standard. And that would include the village. We don't see a need for a sign like this. To us, um, at least from what we've heard, um, from our discussions, it's really a solution in search of a problem. I'm hearing the discussion about, about all the changes that are going to have to be made to accommodate the sign. We have other ways of communicating in this village. We have the, we have the interwebs, we have a Facebook page. Lately, an idea's come up about an app that's available to villages that send out, you know, alerts and information to, to villagers that are signed up for it. And frankly, I think villagers who want to be informed about when the next village council meeting is, they, they know when it is and they know when to go. Um, I'm not aware of any super pressing village, um, business, um, that really needs to be splashed on a TV all the time. I think it's bright. I think people walking down the street will think it's ugly, uh, even if it's in a beautiful wood casing, um, just doesn't fit. And it's visually distracting from the rest of Franklin and, again, the details that, that make up Franklin. If we're talking about putting a static message on signs, um, you know, that can be accomplished by other means as well. If, if the village, um, needs a sign, um, there's really no reason why you couldn't make it a sign that, that is changeable. That is, you know, wood with letters that can be moved or pieces that can be moved, that would be more in keeping with the character of Franklin. I don't know of any emergent, I mean, if we're going to be running emergency broadcasts on, on the sign and for health, safety and welfare, I'm not sure how effective that will be, only because half the villagers don't even drive through Franklin to get to their homes. I mean, we've got people who enter homes off of 13 Mile, we've got people who enter their homes off of 14 Mile and, you know, again, going to the necessity of, of, of such a, kind of plopping this big, I'll call that the elephant, in the middle of Franklin, just, just isn't justified from what, from what we've seen. I don't know if there's been a survey by the, the council members or, you know, if it's just anecdotal. I don't know how big this problem is that villagers don't get information. Also in the master plan is, is the- Um, also in the master plan is, is the goal of, you know, keeping the, the village website, you know, robust, active, user-friendly. Take that twenty thousand dollars and put it into the website, I mean, I think that's an equal, uh, and appropriate thing to do. Um, I think most people are connected, um, on the interwebs nowadays, and, um, you know, there's other options. So those are probably not all of the reasons that we've discussed, but, you know, those are some of them, and, um, don't want to repeat myself, but that's basically our position, and, um, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
So, um, I, I have a few questions, um, thank you, first off, for being here, and thank you for, um, for reiterating, um, uh, HDC's stance. Um, I, I guess one of, you know, one of our goals in planning is to improve our communication with HDC, with Main Street and the other organizations.
Yeah.
So, a lot of our Main Street falls in the HDC area, and one of the reasons why we would like to encourage our communication and cooperation with Main Street is to bring people downtown.
Sure.
So hopefully, we'll be having more people passing by downtown.
Yeah.
Um, and, 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 and so I can see the concern, um, with regards to Main Street being excluded from a sign ordinance that would only benefit, say, the village offices, right? So I, I, I get, I get that.
Has Main Street said that they would oppose this, like, in this regard? Like, I, I haven't heard anything from them specifically saying.
I don't know that it's out there, that, that people know that this is being considered at this point in time, it's just sort of a moving target, so.
It has not been discussed with Main Street.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I think that's interesting that you say that, because to me, that's a communication issue, which is the whole point of your saying that there is not a communication issue. I, I know that there is, I've done that research, I've looked into it a lot. Um, it's not easy getting that, you think that, like, everyone's just gonna go onto the Franklin website and say, "Oh, look, there's a meeting on Monday, I'm gonna go," based on maybe an agenda item. It doesn't, I don't really think that it happens that way. I think Dana does a great job in getting the next week in Franklin out, that's how I think my family ends up getting our, most of our news out, even about like the garbage things, and from talking to other neighbors. But it was really interesting that you said that you don't think it's a problem, because I can't, I don't think that there's many ways that we actually do communicate well. And I do think that we, you know, you heard many times, "Hey, we don't have people at our meetings," or whatever it is. I think that's a product of those things, of like, we don't have those communication points that should be made aware of. And, you know, I, I do, I hear your point, and I really appreciate you coming and working with us on it, but I, I do also think having like this blanket idea that we don't need more communication, this is just an ugly TV, also doesn't compromise and bring to the table of how can we also make sure that we are getting out important information, or things are, are happening. I do think, you know, those are pieces that you go by other towns, and they do have a sign, you know, you walk, you go down Thirteen Mile, and you see Beverly Hills sign, I know when they're, all of their meetings are, because I, I go down, but, you know, Thirteen Mile. And I, I don't even think necessarily it's about the electric sign, but I think it's just in terms of, when you talk about the master plan, I think for me, it looks at it as how can we best meet the needs of our community and our residents? And part of that is making everybody aware of what's happening, whether it be a Main Street event, or whether it be an FCA event, or whether it be a historic event, like, those pieces, I think, bring Franklin together. And I don't necessarily think that it has to be an electric sign, but my kids go to Bingham Farms, and, you know, watching the school administrator try to change that sign out there, she hates it every single month, like, and the glass pane cracks, and it rusts, and it's not as easy as you think it is, and I think asking people to do things like that, I don't think that we're always thinking about, okay, sure, we don't want this electric sign, but then you're also putting in, the intention is maybe not, hey, we want this to be modern, but it's, hey, we're also looking at our staffing, and we're telling them, like, nope, you gotta go do this out in the wintertime too, or, you know, like, we don't need this information, and I just think that there needs to be more of a compromise and balance for this, other than just saying, we don't need it. I, I think Pete went to your meeting before, I, I know Stuart went, and I'm really glad that he did, but I think that there also needs to be, like, consideration for, let's try to make this work for as many people as possible, and make sure that we're hitting the objective of at least wanting our residents to know more and to be more engaged.
So I, I don't disagree with you, I think you're talking about two kinds of communication, though. I think number one, communication between the, the appointed committees, between planning, between HDC and the village council. Um, I don't know if that's accomplished by a street sign, so that's, when I talk about, we didn't know about whether Main Street knew or not.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, like, when you say it's a communication, yes.
That's a different kind of, uh, communication, um, that I don't think we're talking about today. Quite frankly, I think it's very important that people stay engaged, and people know what's going on in their village. I think the people who are, seek it out, um, I think they seek it. I don't know how many people driving down Franklin Road will see that there's a planning commission meeting on Wednesday night at seven o'clock, and say, "Oh dang, I want to go there." What kind of information are you going to be imparting on a sign like that? Are you going to have all the details, are you going to have the agenda, kind of paste it up there for everyone to look at? Are you then going to tell them, "Go to our website and look at what's coming up next week"? You know, I don't know that a problem with that has really been established, and, you know, I appreciate what you're saying about, I find about, about meetings this way, that's anecdotal. I don't know if that's a village-wide problem, I don't know if that's a demographic problem. I don't know if it's a problem with people who don't live in the core of Franklin, um, who can just, you know, look at the banner across Franklin Road and know when the next event is, you know, I don't know what the problem is. And I don't know if the village council has established that there is a, a village-wide problem, so.
So Laura, speaking to that, um, I guess, most of us, I think, we have, we are concerned that we don't communicate enough, that there'd be the best communication we can do, I think I mentioned, you know, the years where basically you had a little paper in the back of the library door, you know, whoever looked at that, so, um, you know, I think the, the council is, is concerned with that, that's really important to them, that, that we, they be really communicative. I think many of us have good sympathy for that. Um, I hope you'll, I, I guess, at least accept the opinion, my opinion, that it is important, it is important, this communication.
I don't disagree that.
It could be helpful, so, but what I really try to understand is, you know, the impact on the character, the culture, the heritage, the history. You know, I've always struggled with it a little bit, you know, in what ways, you know, does modernization, I, I like to have this, this feeling that our village is improving things, that we're doing things, that we're upgrading things, taking care of things, people care about it. And obviously, I'm really sensitive to history, I love the history, all of that, very important. But I'm, I try to understand, you know, and I think your words were, were excellent about why people move here, the appreciation of this, you know, rural character in some ways, um, you know, quietness, subtlety, all those things are good. And I, you know, I, I do, I wrestle, wrestle with it, I tend to be maybe more progressive than some, but I think, um, one way of looking at it is, um, you know, what way could we do it? What way could we do it, could we communicate better? And, you know, the idea of having the sign, having the sign in a place where people can, can know where it is, kind of, a more visible place that isn't necessarily so up in your face, um, or, another suggestion, that you think is more, would be more appropriate for a wonderful little historic village.
Right, so the only, the only suggestion, the only idea we've been presented with is the giant TV idea. So, in terms of us considering other ideas, um, we haven't had anything put in front of us.
Right. It's mainly, it's mainly, like, what would a little historic town do, like, the village crier would go.
Well, yeah, right. I mean, I'm not saying we'd go back to, you know, the eighteen hundreds or anything like that, but I think there's probably a, a more, um, aesthetic type of solution without going, you know, to the far end of, you know, TV land. And, um, I think what was telling to me was when you asked, um, the sign people who are here, where they've seen signs like this, there's nowhere like Franklin that has a sign like this, nowhere.
I think that Fenton probably would be a close comparison.
I, I don't know, I've driven through Fenton, Fenton, and they've got strip malls, and they have electronic, other electronic signs, and they have, it's not Franklin, and.
But they do have a historic element, and it is in front of the municipal building, which is in the historic district.
Yeah, um, but it's not, it's not exactly like Franklin, though.
The, the, the issue that, you know, this, what you're saying is not new. Many, many of these components are things that we have spent innumerable hours on. You sat tonight and you heard Kathy say that the FCA has three hundred members in it. There are approximately twelve hundred families in this community. Clearly, if by having a sign up there, we could bring a hundred more families in, that would be huge. The goal of Main Street Franklin is to encourage participation, encourage coming to Main Street. It's, it's been a problem. And if by having that there, it can somehow drive more people into downtown Franklin, that would be an advantage. Um, you know, I mean, this is just something that we've grappled with on, on so many levels. Dana, how many email addresses, how many homes are actually represented in the number of emails? I think you said you have like twelve hundred, which could be six hundred homes of the twelve hundred in Franklin? If by having a sign out there, it meant that those other six hundred homes, or a thousand homes, we don't really know for sure, that maybe somebody who doesn't participate by email would see that and would want to come to some of these meetings? Because, you know, we have held so many public hearings, that we have tried to disseminate through the other methods that we have available to us, and our participation has been zero. And it costs a lot of money, it costs a lot of preparation for all of our staff, it costs a lot of time for, for us, for them, and so, I, I get it, I, you know, I, I have lived in Franklin almost my entire life, um, and I love it, and you're right, it's historic. But we also need to be able to participate in improving and updating our community, or we, we're going to lose a lot of the vitality that we have.
So that, that. That's your point, okay.
Sure.
Yeah, Al, please. Yes.
Communication is not good.
Oh, well, is this question directed to Nate, um, to?
I'm Laura.
To Laura, thank you, sorry.
Okay.
Otherwise, we can, if, if you're okay, then we can have a general discussion, either way.
Uh, well, I can wait, I don't have a specific question for Laura, but, um, I wanted to, uh, express my thoughts, so I, I'll wait if that's appropriate.
So, just, I wanted to respond just to Linda's point, which is, well, well-taken. If we can gain participation in village activities, whether it's, you know, the roundup, or whatever else, fantastic. I don't know that a single sign in the village, whether it's lit up like a Christmas tree or not, is gonna do that. I don't know that any study's been done, I don't know if we have data on that. Um, that would be something that, you know, should be considered by the village before it spends twenty thousand dollars on something that, you know, doesn't have that big of an effect, and really impacts the character of the community going forward. So, um, whichever one sees, anyone who comes into Franklin sees that, so, um.
Yeah, thank you. Did you have any, anyone else have any comments? Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, and you're really welcome to stick around, and, uh, if, if anything comes up and you want to address, that's, you're welcome. Um, okay, Al, please.
Okay, well, I, um, I'm agreeing with a lot of different people here. I'm agreeing with Sarah that our communication is lacking, um, that nobody shows up at these meetings. And unless it's a council meeting that, uh, that Cat gets involved with, with whipping up the troops, nobody comes, nobody comes to those either, so.
She's a tongue cramer.
So our communication is, is not good. Um, but I also feel that this sign does not belong here. I look at, I live right, not far from West Maple, and that sign is lit up, and it just, it doesn't belong. I drive down Thirteen Mile Road, and I see the one at, uh, at thirteen Evergreen, and it's, it, I don't think they belong here. The schools have the right to put them there, because they don't have to listen to the local ordinances, so they can do whatever they want. This sounds to me, based on what Chris has said, is we have a similar situation here. The council can say, if they wish, that this is for the welfare of the community, and therefore, no ordinance change is required. Option number three. I think that for us to suggest that we, to take it upon ourselves to say that this sign belongs here, when I don't think anybody really feels that it, it fits in, is beyond our task. I think we should kick it back to council and say, "Do you have the right under option number three to, um, to go forward with this, if you think that it is necessary for, uh, public welfare, and so go for it? And if you do, then this is where we think it should be, right out in front, but you guys decide." Um, because I don't think it belongs, as much as I am in favor of bringing the twenty, what are we, the twenty-second century now? Twenty-first, twenty-second century? Into our community, you know, I'm number one on paving Thirteen Mile Road, as, as you all know. So I would, you know, I'm into not necessarily the same things that the historical commission is into, but I agree with them that I don't think this sign belongs here.
What if we were to talk about compromises, like, any information disseminated would only be in, you know, forest green and cream, or black and white, or something like that? We could do that, and, you know, I, I would really want to avoid sending Dana outside in her boots in February. It's just, it's a picture that would be burned into my mind, but, um, you know, I, I just, so- somewhere there is a compromise, that I think everybody, you know, I did not need to see the green Incredible Hulk. I, you know, so, that would be jarring, but if I saw, um, you know, something that was simple, and with just words, and in, you know, a tasteful font, that said, "Your participation is needed," you know, council meeting. In some ways, I think that, you know, you see these signs outside of, of communities, you know, "Community meeting Thursday at four." I, I personally feel like it gives it kind of a warm, homey feel, and, hey, you're needed, you're part of the small community. So, I don't know, it's just my thoughts.
Okay, I think I have a solution.
Hold on, can we, first, Cat? But, okay. Please, Danny, yeah.
Yeah, sure, and, and I want to be upfront about something, which is I have nothing against Las Vegas. I really enjoy taking trips there, I'm planning one right now, as a matter of fact, but I don't think we need a little piece of Las Vegas. Here in Franklin, I, I think it's just out of character, it's contrary to, to what we have for the reasons our, our guests articulated very well. I definitely like the idea of informing the villagers of community events, but I don't really think this is an effective means to do so. A- as was pointed out, it's really a small fraction of Franklin residents who would even drive by this sign. Very often, you have a lot of people who live off a telegraph and don't go by. Very often, you have a lot of people who live off a telegraph and don't go by there that much, you have a lot of people who live south of the sign or come in off of Inxter, so I, I think most of the people who drive by are Bloomfield Township residents who are just passing through and it's really not, not meant for them anyway. And, and, you know, the idea of people reading it while they're driving, the whole distracted driving thing concerns me a little bit, that, that we want to even be encouraging that necessarily. And, and you don't have a lot of pedestrians who are, are walking by either, who are really going to take the time, who, who, you know, aren't driving and there's no danger to them reading it, but there's not a lot of foot traffic here, so I don't think it's going to reach them. And then another thing, so many of the events here, we've been through this before with what the village publicizes on the websites, but as I recall, because I asked at a prior meeting, we don't publicize FCA or Main Street events anyway, which is a good chunk of...
Yes, we do.
Do we, on the village website? I thought, I thought we don't.
On our newsletter.
The newsletter, okay. Because I remember there being an issue with like, all these events aren't listed in one convenient place and it's kind of hard to find these things anyway, so may, maybe that's, maybe I'm off on that one, but.
You're thinking of a calendar, I think you're saying a, a community calendar.
Yeah, a community calendar. We don't, we don't publish one of those, so we wouldn't be able to have a calendar on, on the sign apparently. And, and to me, there's this, this irony in it, in that on the one hand, the sign is too modern for Franklin and that's the problem and that's why I don't think it belongs, but I also think it's, at this point, too outdated in that people aren't getting information from a sign these days. You're, you're, you're going to the internet, you're, you're pulling up your internet machine and you're, you're looking at the website if you want to know what's going on. If you're interested in attending a planning commission meeting or a council meeting, you, you'll look up the date online, if you want to see what the agenda is, it's online, you can have much more information than just a few lines on a sign. And, and email lists, you know, it's great to improve upon that, but to me, this is not really effective and certainly, I don't think it's a good use of, of village resources.
Pete?
So, you know, I guess my, my, I think I did kind of state my views adequately, but I would say that it's equally important that we all get along.
Was that directed at me, Pete?
And then, you know, I'm really, I'm really trying, you know, I, I hate to see the trustees take the attitude that we're just gonna defy, you know, these opinions. So, really, really make, making them see and hopefully, you know, if we just present them these options, you know, it's disrespectful to our HDC. And, you know, depending on where it goes, I, I hope that whatever the decision is, that the HDC and Laura has a chance to, you know, express their views to the trustees and that the trustees will listen. I, I just hate to see our village be divided and, you know, I, I think, I think we have that sometimes and if the government can't be respectful of everyone's opinions, then it kind of, sort of spreads out. So, that's it, that's it.
Is there anything additional?
I mean, I just wanna, I think to Linda's point, I think the compromise is, something's gotta change. I think that's the recognition point that we all are at, right? In terms of communication, something's gotta change, we gotta figure it out. I agree that I think the sign is far too modern. Nope. But like, the one that was presented here, if this was black and white or cream and black, you know, and only certain hours, I don't think that that is, I mean, it looks very similar to our welcome to Franklin signs. But I agree with Dan's point, I agree with the fact that that's not how you, most people get their information. But I, I do think the recognition is though that council also from watching all of the meetings, they seem to be driving this in a way that they are really looking for something, like they want this and they are looking for us to really, at least give them what we are thinking. And I don't think, over the last few months, we've done, been able to do that, but I hope that we figure out a way to, to give options that they can then deal with and can figure out, you know, like, if, if that's a historic thing with them, you know, like, I, I think at some point, we also have to be, we are the planning commission, we are a group two and everybody is saying needs to just be able to be taken into their own space as well. But I, I appreciate it and I would love to continue, if you have suggestions on how to make communications better, always willing to take them and listen to them. I think it's just, the compromising point needs to come in at some point of how are we gonna fix this problem that we've identified is a problem and where do we go from here?
And we were asked to and did form a sign committee that Al and I served on, which was...
But at that point, we were talking about existing street name signs and regulatory signs and that sort of stuff.
Well, but this idea.
We had, we did talk about that.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
A lot. But, and I think the other thing that, that is, you know, again, and you're right, you know, it's stupid, we shouldn't have to drive by and look at a sign, you know, I, so what, what is the answer? Sarah has presented answers that have largely been ignored.
Well, maybe not.
Not answers, she's done presentations that, that have, that, yeah, that's, that's a poor choice of words. But the other thing is, we've got all these new businesses coming in downtown and, you know, is that going to increase foot traffic? Would it make that sign more, that, that I don't know. I mean, I, I hope that it will increase foot traffic, but how do we translate that into more participation in the village and more knowledge of what's going on here? It's, it's the harder.
All right, before I say something, Kathy, go ahead and I'll let you.
I feel like we can, like I just.
You're good, you're good.
I wanna.
I'm sorry.
Because I had this great idea, well, my first question is, we've talked a lot about sending out an e-bass lately.
So, you probably think the same thing, what if we send out a, a monthly e-bass with all the upcoming meetings that's, that's planned on that month? And then like you got specials, like, we do a public hearing where we send out e-bass reminding everybody about that.
Right, if people sign up for the e-bass and they relate.
That's the problem.
Maybe that would get more people interested and that would be a lot cheaper to get in the sign.
Right, so that's one way to connect people in their homes right there. But if you wanted to put something out there, my thought was, I just had this image of using like the sign, the wooden sign that you create or whatever, that, that one with the pole and the topping that says Franklin Village, but what if we were able, because most of the signs that we're gonna be putting up, for the most part, are things that happen regularly. Planning Commission is always on, you know, whatever. It's the, the same sign, Planning Commission meeting today, Council meeting today at seven, you know, roundup meeting, roundup coming, you know, if you wanted to put that out there, if you wanted to, if you had vote today, you know, at the church, the same meeting, it's the same sign you're gonna put up again and again and again, and so to me, do we need it to be electric? Can we get a magnetic, you know, they put the magnetic signs on people's cars? Could we have like a metal thing that, and you have like multiple magnetic squares that you wouldn't have to put the little things up, but you'd have to walk outside and pop the magnetic sign up to say Planning Commission today? And so, yes, you'd be going out in the winter, but it would be one on each side and it would be the same, it would be easy and cheap as can be and should weather well and, and, and you'd want to make it look nice, so you'd have to have somebody to make it, but to me, that seems like a cool option that isn't lit up, but it is like a, basically a kiosk that's on Thirteen Mile Road that is visual and large enough that people could, could see it if they wanted to. Changeable, too.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so, thank you for all your comments and, and things that we've talked about. So, this has been a hot topic for council for, for a while, for, since October, almost a year, right? So, they've been...
Started last spring, actually.
Start, okay. You mean in twenty twenty-three spring?
Four.
Twenty-four, okay. But we had discussed it in October of last year, too.
That's true.
So, but it became more pressing in the springtime of this year. And council is looking, was looking for an update to the municipality. Now, I think that Chris, you did a great job, I think, of outlining what the options are. If we were to do an ordinance amendment and council was to make a change to the ordinance, we would need to do a public hearing next month to discuss any changes or recommendations for Chris to write an ordinance, and then we, then council can have approval. The other, other consideration or thought would be also is to take what these three options are to counsel and say, hey, these are the three options we're considering. One of them does not require an amendment change, but it's kind of the, it seems to me like a nuclear option, I, with the option three, but we're on, otherwise, you know, I, I don't think that we should circumvent the HDC in this because I think the historic nature of, of the village needs to be taken into account with any signage that we would do.
That's option one.
That's option one.
Yep.
And then, and then option two would be an approval exception from, is it, that's from the, yeah, where the HDC would not need to be, and...
Which is also kind of overriding the HDC.
So, option two and three override the HDC, right?
Yeah, they all do, right?
But none of those include conversation between the council and the HDC or anything else.
That's correct.
The, the issue ought to be that it's adequately explored and ultimately, the council still has to make a decision, a policy decision.
Correct.
About how they're gonna deal with, notwithstanding whatever it is the HDC chooses to argue.
Could, could we also make a suggestion that these are our options, but we would also, you know, strongly encourage you to save the money on the sign and let's put a concerted effort towards improving communication in the village.
Interesting, I'm sort of giggling here because the, the question of communication has been a strong discussion point with the council for some time. And this came up as something that was virtually instantly changeable, could cover any kind of event, discussion, whatever.
Right.
On a daily basis, on, on a weekly basis, whatever, and it was a means that we haven't used or tried. And the council's had some of the same concerns that you guys have expressed about the absence of folks coming in and going, oh, yeah, that's what I, oh.
I mean, last night, there was an activity in the church.
Yeah.
Was that on the website?
It was in a newsletter.
It was in the newsletter, right? But it wasn't necessarily, unless you read the newsletter.
Because it was not a village, um, activity. This was a sponsored by the, um, the legal board.
But it was talking about the candidates that would be running for council.
Right.
And so, you could have gone and, and participated, and so this is a huge communication concern.
There are ten people there.
There are how many?
There are like ten.
Was it recorded?
Yes.
In my business, I'm constantly finding ways to incentivize people to share their email. I mean, you know.
But this wasn't an email.
I know, I know, but I, but had...
Because I do the best part of email lag.
Right, right.
It gets sent out, sent out.
I, I'm saying it was missed by all of us who probably, Dana probably has our email, right?
Exactly, so, so.
But I have to read the email, yeah.
Yeah, what, what would have helped. It, that's, that's really the crux of it, I, you know.
So, I guess, I mean, I personally don't like any of these options. I would not recommend them personally, it would be difficult for me to vote in favor of any of these options. And simply encourage dialogue between, you know, I guess the, the, having the trustees try to explain this more clearly to us, how this is an advantage, and to the HDC, have the dialogue with the HDC. I, I feel like, you know, there are many good reasons to put out more information, we all agree with that, but...
So, what about an opportunity for you to send a message to council?
Yeah.
And have your own little planning council workshop?
That's what I was suggesting.
And HDC workshop, that's a good idea.
And just have an opportunity to sit down and hash it out.
Yep, I agree.
I mean, you, earlier today, you were talking about getting along. You can't get along if you don't talk.
Absolutely.
Right?
I, you know, it's so ironic to me that we talk so much about how we need to talk with the residents more, we need to talk, I feel like we need to talk amongst ourselves more, have more open communication so that it's not news to you that they want an electronic sign, that they're all talking to each other and, and there's at least an awareness of it, you're not making a policy decision, you're just, it's informational, it's, it, I mean, we have to do it in a workshop, we can do it, but how would we go about doing that?
Thank you, that's my question.
You can only have a few council members together at one time.
Well, you can always...
Yeah, I know, but a workshop.
Let Roger answer, please, yeah.
It would be a, you're...
A joint meeting.
Right. This would be a workshop, it's an open meeting, notice it's posted, so they know that you can own talk about what you're, you put out what you're gonna talk about, so it would be electronic sign. So, you can't talk about anything else, you can't make a vote, but you can hash out any, any issues you may have.
And that's perfectly legal. As long as it's posted and you, you stick to what it is you've said you're gonna do. As I was thinking about, next month, we've got council meeting on, was it the ninth or something?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. One suggestion is, you take a memo that you guys have put together saying, here, we've gone through all this stuff, here are our concerns, we're not anxious to recommend that you do any of this, but we think we need to talk about communication.
Yeah, we need to find the root of the problem.
I love that, that idea.
Yeah, okay.
We ask for a workshop then like an hour before council.
It's part of the memo.
You could do it any one of a number of ways, but I would, I would take your time about it and I would, I would do it at this next meeting. Give yourself some time to word carefully what it is that you put together. Stuart's a master at that.
You're saying present it at the next meeting and then do it after?
Well, I believe, I would have it done in time for the legal committee to look at it the week prior, so that they see what's coming and maybe then there'll be some suggestions about those next steps.
Right. So, I mean, Pete, you outlined that you would not be in favor of any of the three options. Is that, is, I mean, how, what are, what, just a straw poll here, like, how, what is our feel for those that are here on, on those three options as moving forward? Because if we write a memo, we do need to show that we have done work, we have considered options, but none of the options that we're, we've considered seem adequate without further workshopping and dialogue. I don't know if, am I representing our statement? Am I misrepresenting one of you? Please, let's...
So, perhaps I'm confused and I don't...
The idea of a, of a...
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, perhaps I'm confused, but I was looking through the options, it seems like the three options are options to allow for an electronic sign in Franklin, is, is that right?
Yes, so that we did our exploratory to allow signs, electronic signs in the village, but we're having reservations still even accepting any of those options.
Well, to, to me, it seems like the first question is, do we even support having an electronic sign in Franklin at all? And if, if we don't, then we don't have to consider any of the options or, or, we get back to council and say, we don't even support this altogether. And I'm, I'm not sure we have a consensus supporting it. You know, I'm against it, Al's against it, Stuart, I don't know where you stand, some others have made different comments, but should, should we take a straw vote on that or?
I mean, that's what, that's kind of what I'm asking right now, actually, so...
Workshop for alternatives.
That.
But I, I mean, are we in fa, I mean, okay, Linda, I, I personally, I'm not a huge fan of having the sign, electronic, electronic sign. Given the technology that's available, to not make it look like Las Vegas, that, of these options, I mean, he really didn't speak to our audience very well with regards to the conservative nature of our village. I really kind of wish that he had had a different, they had presented something different. I mean, if you can make a giant E Ink display, that to me makes a lot more sense than, because it's easy to read, it's, you can illuminate it like a normal sign and it changes and you don't have to be out there. But, I mean, that's a giant E-reader, right? An E Ink, like a Kindle.
Enlightening.
Like, it's, it's, it's movable text, but like a Kindle, like where you have, it's not backlit. You have to light it from in front. Anyway, that to me would have been a more amenable solution to an electronic device because it can look like a normal sign. But anyway, as far as what we're, for, as far as electronic displays, the way that we're being presented with LED, I'm not personally, I, I don't like it, but Linda, I don't know.
Well, I, I think it's a Band-Aid.
Okay.
And...
It's an expensive Band-Aid.
It is an expensive Band-Aid and if it's gonna throw that kind of money at something, I would much rather throw it into something that's going to...
PR.
Improve communicate, I mean, that's really what it's about. It, it, it's about communication and, and that's huge.
When you put it that way, Linda, yeah, I, I think about the public relations that we're doing right now with Pickering. And, you know, you, you hire a public relations person, they're incredible, that's what they do, you know, and you could... And you could, that money could go a long way. A PR person, that, that's really, they're, they're all about getting the message out, all the different avenues of doing it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, take five dollars off your village taxes if you give us your email address. I mean, you know, trust me, they'd be lining up for miles.
How many mills?
That's right.
We're going to buy them, that's, we're going to-
That's correct. What, you are incentivizing, not buying.
Sarah.
Incentivizing them to-
I, I think this is too modern for Franklin. I think the electronic sign as presented, these options are too modern for Franklin. I would-
Okay.
I would not support those.
So, this is what I'm hearing, um, and is that as, as a, um, planning commission, we do not feel, uh, we are inconsistent with the HDC with regards to the nature of an electronic sign in the village. We go back to council with that. We said we've looked at it. We've looked at different options for E, E-signs. We don't feel that an ordinance, we feel that the ordinance would be a Band-Aid to a larger communication problem. And we'd like to workshop with council on communication and HDC to help make sure that we as a council, as a community, um, and, and civic government are, um, reaching the needs of our, of our, our neighbors.
Working together.
Would he say?
Yeah.
So does that seem-
Excellent paraphrase, yeah.
Okay, so-
You just wrote the memo.
I just wrote the memo.
You did.
Good job, Stuart.
Thanks. Um, all right, so do we have any? It's recorded, we can, that's right.
I just need the transcript.
Yeah, it's going to transcript. Okay, so, um, let, Dana, let's work together, um, and we're submitting that to go to council with and present before legal. Um, I, I think, um, I think, I think this is important for us to, you know, if, I think it's important that we have a more strongly, um, uh, statement or more clear statement to councils what our opinion is. I think this is good. So, any other topics, any other discussion on this topic as a planning? Okay, so-
I think you should bring up the E Ink idea. I'm just looking up like P S, like that idea. But it's a cool idea because it looks like it's like somebody just put up, like what I'm recommending, which is put something up there so it's a P S, so people can see it, and it's digital and changeable. So it might be okay.
Thank you.
An Etch A Sketch?
Huh?
Look at Etch A Sketch.
No.
Yes, an Etch A Sketch. Outside with your galoshes with an Etch A Sketch. Yes.
This was fun, but I'm leaving.
Thank you for your service. For me and Dan!
Forever, right, yeah.
I usually have to pull out my bet card.
Okay, no, I bet you. No, you, you're amazing. We appreciate you.
Yes, yes.
Sarah, we've done a lot of that. Hey, you, oh, yeah. Thank you.
Let me know your, when, before your last, I want to take you out for a drink.
Ah, that's our drink. We have a month in which to get that done.
Okay, cool.
I'm coming too.
Thank you.
You'll be taking go, departure gifts right up till-
There's been some discussion about event across the screen.
Okay.
Be nice.
Nice, nice.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Put it in the newsletter.
You guys have fun.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we had a, we've had a quite discussion. So, um, the next order of business would be discussion on pathways. Is there, do we have much of an update for pathways for tonight? So we have, Sarah, I believe you have, you've-
I presented that last month. I think we were waiting on the information that we had for the one pathway. We were going to talk about that.
Okay, so nothing, no update we need to get back together then?
Well, I don't, I think-
I just did the first one because I love talking.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad you recognized my communication. Um, no, I think we're just waiting. I think last meeting we said we wanted the, all of the, the bundle of information we had from the one pathway that could go in maybe possibly, as I recall. But we were still waiting on all of the specs for that from someone to dig it out.
I guess, yeah, I recall, um-
That was-
You've got the minute.
Al, were you gonna, you, you had mentioned something about, you know, the connection up there in Columbia.
Well, I, you know, I walk that all the time.
Right.
And between walking through mud and, and ducking your head, um, because of the overgrowth, I think we could do a lot with very little and without even council involvement. And my thought was if we could, um, get the scouts to come out there. They seem great at, at the, uh, you know, when they're out here helping people park and stuff. I was really impressed with them. And I think it would be a one, you know, a couple hours with a few, a few adults.
You're talking about Irving, is that, or the?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
A few adults with, you know, trimmers and maybe one wheelbarrow and somebody's bringing in some wood chips that we get. And I think we could improve that a lot in a very little amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
How?
And make it a lot more usable.
So I guess the question is like, well, we need permission to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't know why. It's, it's our property.
Right.
I mean, the Boy Scouts, or the scouts came in and did the, behind the historic museum fifteen years ago. They didn't ask for permission as far as I know. I mean, maybe they did, but that was about the extent.
We can give them, hopefully we could give them some public service, whatever the points that they need or earn.
They do.
And, uh, and I think it would be a good experience for them and for the adults that worked with them.
I mean, we'd need a few bucks to buy wood chips.
Yeah, but, um, maybe we could get Bingham Farms to give them to us. They got a big pile in their, in their parking lot.
Yeah, or heck, how much can it cost?
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, so, so that's an existing, that, right, that's an existing pathway that we would be helping to maintain, right?
And I think we could do that without any additional, um, authorization. Or just be like, like Pete said, be a matter of buying, uh, you know, twenty bags of mulch.
But would it be natural or artificial mulch?
No rubber.
Asbestos.
Of course, you had to bring that up. Thank you. Thank you. Um, all right, um, so even though he's wearing a suit, he does say jokes. Um, okay, so- He does, I know he does. Well, you spend more time with him outside. It's, it's fun to talk to. Um, the, okay, so, um-
Do we want to vote on that?
So, do we need a vote on that? It's, it, so, so here's, here, here's, here's the thing that I was thinking about though, like, these pathways are meant to benefit the community, right? So the, I'll tell you, so the Boy Scouts, or the scout, the scout troop that's in the village is under the, um, the sponsorship of the FCA. So, um, so we're, the troop currently is under the sponsor of FCA. So it would, it could be, it, it could be an FCA-directed activity that scouts participate with, participate within the commu- with the community. So that was kind of the direction how that would operate because it would be under the, under the auspice of the FCA also volunteering the, the opportunity, right? So this wouldn't be planning, creating the opportunity for the scouts, but it'd be FCA helping direct, because we, um, they're our chartering organization. So that's how that would, that's how that would most likely operate. Now, as far as money donations and things like that, um, I mean, first, first, first and foremost, I think it's a great opportunity from a, um, recruiting standpoint for scouts to see that we're out in the community volunteering, right? But also a good opportunity for the FCA as far as recruiting as well. The FCA is actually doing something for not just their property. So I see a benefit, a mutual benefit for both FCA and scouts in that regard.
I think we could collectively raise enough money easily to pay for our needs.
Hundred bucks for a cubic yard of wood chips.
I was just going to say, I'll donate the first hundred bucks.
Right, so-
There needs a shipper, someone to do a shipper. There's so much wood that you can just stick in and make your own mulch.
We can.
Instead of burning it.
Right, yeah, there you go.
But we'll need a place to put the trimmings.
So, okay, so, um, any, any, is, I mean, there's really nothing to vote on here for us, um, other than this is a proposed idea that, that we can present to FCA and the scouts, right?
Yes, yes.
Do we-
So, oh, I was just going to say, Kathy, would you be able to talk to Al or just say, would you guys want to invite the scouts? And we can pick a date and it sounds like it would be a goal if we, if everyone's on board.
So that-
I think it would be, I mean, I guess I think that if we're going to do something big like that, let's involve, let's, let's invite the community too.
Yeah.
Right.
Because the more, more hands, the better.
Put it on the newsletter.
Yeah, so I think we would want to have an opportunity to invite everybody.
Awesome.
Especially the area that, the people that live near the path.
Right, I know they've reached out before.
Well, and then it expands, hey, look, they're getting a path. Maybe we can get together and build another path. Like the whole, yeah, I mean, like word of mouth would just be like, hey, let's build this, you know?
One issue though, that, uh, the guy's got a no trespassing sign on his driveway.
But, you know, you get out there and you start doing it, he starts seeing it, and maybe he comes out, you say, hey, Mr. Johnson. Look, a great thing we're doing. He said, you know what? Put them down my driveway.
I'm not sure he understands that there's an easement there.
No, the, he does. He's, he's been spoken to about it before by council members, so it's not, I mean-
Right.
So, but no, it is, it is public, a public pathway, so, um-
It's staked.
Yes.
So.
Okay, so, good. Um, thank you. So we'll reach out, talk to Al and, and figure out for the scouts. Um, all right, new business, um, we have the election of officers. So, uh, we put it off already until September to do this because we want more of us here for this. Um, Paul's not here, but that, um, he knew, he knew this was coming as well. So Dana, do you want to talk us through the process for, or Chris, either one, the process for election of officers? Do we do this once a year?
Basically, we do open up the nominations, and once the nominations are made, they vote on who we want.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to nominate all the people that are currently serving to, to serve another year.
Can you do them all at once?
You can technically.
Can you announce those roles, please? So we can put it in a rec-
The offices that are, are open are Chairperson, Coach Chair, and Secretary. Now, those that are in the office, can they decline that office or they can accept the nomination?
You can nominate yourself if you wish.
I, I would, I would accept the nomination.
As I said last year, um, that I think it's important for us to take turns to do this role as Chairperson. I'm happy to serve another term. I wouldn't decline, decline that. Um, I do, but I also think that it's, um, you know, it's also important at some point for us to hand off as well. So I would not be opposed to another nomination, and, and not, a nominee, um, taking, taking over. But at the same time, I'm, I would accept in this case, so.
Do you want to just, you know, obviously we know who the chair is, but who is holding those positions at this time, just for a matter of record?
So we know Stuart is Chair. We know he is Coke, and you are Secretary.
So does someone want to second Al's nomination? Is that how it goes, right?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you for your trust. Um, and I, hopefully I can continue to do adequate work, um, as Chairperson.
We tolerate this.
I know you do. That's what it feels like. Yeah, there's, I, I do have a lot of improvement to do, so I appreciate your, your willingness to suffer through me again. Um, next is the consider separate rules for reg- and regulations for historic district R lots. Now, so I mentioned this briefly, we don't have to make any decisions on this today because it's the first time we've seen this. Um, uh, Chris, I think the direction that we've been given is to go through to see if there, um, there were no specific ordinances that we were given exact tasks with, other than maybe the, the open burn ordinance is the only one that maybe, um, that I know of that, um, might be prohibitive for them to utilize, to burn leaves or burning their property, even having recreational fire based on easements and setbacks. So the question, the question is, you know, um, it seems like a very large task, but, um, with regards to the regulations and ordinances that we have that, um, have setbacks that are, do not apply specifically to our, um, R four, are there ordinances that we should modify? That would, um, that we should identify to modify, um, that would, that would be specific or, or are they sufficient for R four, essentially? So, um, me- meaning if a setback exists for the village at large and, or for all the other districts at large, and R four does not participate due to their dimensions because of the smaller lots in the village, is there a need for a change? And should we, and how do we identify those?
Sir, are, are four of those the smallest lots in the village?
Yeah.
And, and where do they extend? Do they go beyond the historic district or is it pretty much Carroll?
R four is a very limited area, actually.
Carroll and German Mill?
No, it's the, um, attached units.
Say it again?
It's the attached units on Ravine.
How? That's interesting. Was that the intention of the-
Those condos?
Trustees?
I need clarification because I thought it was more historic district, maybe-
It's in the historic district. Um, I'll show you what the zoning map looks like.
Actually, Dana, could you bring it up on the projector? Is that possible, from the website?
That'd be great.
It should be under, under, um, community maps, um, on the website. Now, if you, if you can't find it quickly on our, uh, in our meeting live, then that's something about our website and communication.
I have a computer, so we don't have it set up.
No, no, I get it, I get it, I'm just-
Those are your excuses.
I'm making a joke. Figure if Dan can joke around, I can too.
I mean, it's definitely in the master plan.
So there's R one and R four, right? Yes, it is.
Where did you, is that how you got there?
Under community, if you go to, um, if you go to community, and then you go to maps, it's, the zoning map is there.
There we go.
Yeah.
So there's the R four.
Yeah.
There it is. You know, the R four in the village is right here, and this is, uh, this parcel is where the attached units are located.
Mm-hmm.
This segment here is vacant land. This segment here is a parking, part of the parking lot for the commercial that's up here.
Yep, restaurant.
This is part of the parking lot for the commercial that's up here.
Plaza Jones Building.
Yeah, let's, let's get some more clarification because it doesn't sound like it applies to residents.
No, it doesn't.
Well, we're not setting up bonfires right in those places.
What they're talking about is R three.
That's what I was going to say. I think they, they want R three, those are the residents.
We can assume that, or we can-
No, I think it, I think it might be sa- let's, let's assume for R three because those are really the people impacted.
If we want to talk more.
Oh, okay, that makes more sense. And then you've got R three on both sides of the street here, right?
Yes.
You have here and over this whole top here.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So, Chris, if you wouldn't mind looking to see, because I know that there are ordinances that do call out R three specifically. Um, like accessory buildings calls them out and says how many they can have. The chicken ordinance, I believe, also has an R three, um, call out as well, um, chicken ducks. Um, there's several, like, like, large animals also, I think, believe does call that out. But we just need to, we can make sure they're, we clarify, um, or make sure that we've taken them into account for these ordinances if they haven't been-
Okay, I'll look into that.
Does that seem clear to, or questions are clear, clear to you?
Is that where Tangerina is? I'm trying to figure out, but, like, what buildings that is on.
I think it's from, it's from Vincennes to Wellington, so it's the four houses, residential houses.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Snow House to the McCloud House. It includes a couple behind them.
And firehouses right there too, right?
Four houses, plus the two behind, or in the two.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, even the, um, Drake Gallery is boxed out of that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's not the gallery anymore.
Does that make sense? Chris?
I think so. I, I may have to call you and-
Yeah, let's-
Get clarification.
We can, we can talk more, um, about it. Um, this is-
I mean, so, this was brought up-
Chairman Goldberg, um, brought it up to-
Whoa, who?
I'm not chairman, sorry.
Commiss- trustee-
Trustee, trustee. He was the chairman of this, this committee, sorry.
Okay, you can do that, yeah.
In my head, that's what I was, that's what kind of came to my mind. Now, trustee, trustee Goldberg brought it up in council meeting.
You know, there was the, the issue with the house on the corner of, uh, Franklin and Carroll, and that may have caused this to come up, that those, you know. So all the issues that you've mentioned do seem to affect them, especially, especially because their lots are so small.
So was this goal to, um, make some of the ordinances that apply to the other areas in the community not apply to these, to that zoning district?
It, it's more to verify that, I believe, my understanding, and I can, I can, I can clarify with council as well, but it's my understanding that, some of the ordinances might not have taken the R three into account when they were written.
Oh, we did.
But we, we, we did, right, we did. But, 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 in, in those cases, though, there could be an ordinance, there are, could be ordinances that, that don't take into account, and we should either, yes, rightfully so, they shouldn't apply because the lots are too small for X, Y, Z reason. But at least, at least know that we've taken them into account before, rather than just, they've been left out.
Obviously, it would really be Chris, you know, going through this, and, and it's kind of a, you know, if we had more idea, like, what specifically are you referring to? Otherwise, we do have to do a pretty thorough study of all our ordinances.
Well, I think we should, I think we should ask council.
Yeah.
First of all, do you mean R three, not R four?
Yes.
And secondly, is, are there any specific ordinances that you would like us to pay attention to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And then we can have a more coherent discussion over here.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. So the next topic, um, is consider defining, clarifying the items for open burn ordinance. Okay. So, we have spent an extensive amount of time on open burn ordinance in the past. Those of you that remember, um, from, I believe, uh, last year, we talked about it. And we went through and defined, um, bonfires and, and other, other types of fires. I did not, I intentionally did not have, want, have included, I wanted the current ordinance included in our packet. Because mostly, um, what comes, what it comes down to is, the council gave us direction, they want to know if we feel that bonfires are a permitted or, a permit or non-permit required activity. And mostly it comes to the confusion of what is a bonfire, and so if a bonfire is, three feet or bigger, or do we need to prescribe what a bonfire is? We did talk about it last time, and did say, you know, in this case, last time we spoke, we said, for the purposes of this ordinance, a bonfire is defined as a large controlled fire built in a field or large public open area for the purposes of entertainment or celebration. Fuels typically used for bonfire are branches, large logs, scrap wood, and wooden pallets. Bonfires may be built on a public or private property. A permit shall be required prior to creating a bonfire. Now, that is what we had talked about in the past. The current ordinance actually does not require a permit for a bonfire. Is the, is the current ordinance in our packet? I was looking for that.
So this is the marked up ordinance that
Right.
that we submitted. Actually, it's not even what we submitted.
No. They, it was, our, that ordinance is stripped out.
Well, I mean, I think this is what we submitted, but it has been lined out. I mean, these are all the things we talked about, burning under trees, keeping it away from houses, not burning next to flammable items, right?
Right. But that's not what council's looking for from us. What, what council's looking for from us is a, um, is, is, it, is, is the bonfire, is it required to be permitted or not? Should we make it a, should we put it under the open burn section where it's, where they have to request a permit? Or do we think that bonfires are consistent with the village? Remove bonfires as an option completely, and leave campfires, and I'm looking for the, um,
It's in 307.2.1.
Thank you.
Bonfires and campfires which are to be used in conjunction with civic, social, or athletic events are allowed without a permit.
But that's been crossed out here.
No, this is the current ordinance.
Right, and they want us to update the current ordinance, not.
We basically left it the same last time we reviewed it.
So they want to take that out? Who did this, this, these black lines here?
This is old. I, I didn't actually want, I
I think it was mainly.
I wanted the current ordinance in our packet tonight, so that we, we only really focused on the current ordinance. Um, because that's really what council's asking us to modify.
But the language about bonfires.
Just to clarify, the whole reason is that there's one neighbor that made a bonfire, and it wasn't for a civic event, it wasn't for people hanging out around a fire, he was burning.
He was, he was burning leaves, yeah.
But the neighbor complained, because they have an issue, the two of them, they're right, you know, they've been fighting over a lot of different things. But he asked, did they get a permit to do the bonfire? And the answer from our person was, well, he doesn't need a permit for a bonfire.
But it's not a bonfire if it's.
It was, it was burning, but he called it a bonfire, and so because the homeowner calls it a bonfire.
It's not, according to this definition, that's not a bonfire.
Well, then that's our village inspector who was doing it shouldn't have allowed it to be called one. But that was, that's the premises of why this came out. How do we differentiate so that a person can't?
Well, I think we've already done that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, so, so the question then is, is it a matter of training the village to, how to read the ordinance? Or, um, because in this case, it clearly was not. I mean, I, I will say, part of this problem comes from the fact that, uh, between those two neighbors, part of it comes because, um, work is done without a permit, or, or vill-, or, or having gotten a permit.
Right.
And then make modifications to their home. The neighbor reports the per, non-permitted activity, the village, um, does nothing. And so.
Well, this has to do with the fire, right?
But, no, the, the fire is one more incident. No, it's building as well, and fences, and bu-, and fire.
But the village, the village did do something about the building permits. That you have to have building permits. My understanding.
I think it was, it was, it was, it was a property line issue, one of the issues there, where the, the one owner, my understanding is that he went past the property line and started putting things on the other person's property line. There's a whole lot of different things back and forth. It's not just one thing.
Okay.
But, but, I mean, to me, after getting, digging into this, it seems like more this is a problem of the village actually not enforcing the ordinance that's.
I think the ordinance could be clear, because what it says now is bonfires and campfires which are are, uh, used in conjunction with civic, social, or athletic events are allowed without a permit. But what it doesn't say is, what about campfires and bonfires that are not used in conjunction with those sorts of events?
But the description of a bonfire here.
And it doesn't define what, there should be a definition of what a bonfire or campfire.
Well, we gave it to them.
There's, there's stuff that's left out of the current ordinance.
So.
I just have a clarifying question. So are we saying that a campfire and a recreational fire are essentially contained in a pit, right? And then the bonfire is not contained in the pit? That's how I'm reading it, is that?
Well, the current ordinance does not.
Does not say that.
Does not say that.
Well, it just says controlled. So I'm trying to, to figure out what controlled means in this way, because it does spell out contained for recreational fires, but I guess that's, I understand that not having the definition when I'm reading it, and I'm like, okay, I have a fire pit in my backyard, and I'm like, and I'm trying to think of, like, the math.
I think, I think we could reword this sentence pretty easily, Chris, to read, bonfires and campfires are to be used in conjunction with civil, social, or athletic events, and are not required to obtain a permit.
See?
You just take out that which is the word which, and you make it that they have to be used in conjunction with a civil, social, or athletic event.
But what about just a family campfire in the backyard?
That's social.
They're social.
But standing in the backyard, the leaf blower blowing fire, I'm blowing a leaf, uh, a leaf blower into your leaves, into your ring, doesn't necessarily count.
You got your open burning in the backyard.
You can get a permit for open burn. So, the, I, so I talked to the police chief, I mean, the police, the fire chief about this, um, and the stance of the fire department is, you know, you, we can write the ordinance however we will, as long, but what their stance is, is they want to make sure the fire is contained, controlled, and able to be put out ri-, easily.
That's right.
Right, so they're.
That's all what we went through last time. I spoke with him, and that's what he told us, and we wrote up an ordinance.
And there's no cha-, no, no cha-, no, their cha-, stance has not changed, right? So, so personally, and since filling out a permit is not onerous, it is literally going to their website and filling out a form, and reading the ordinance that's there, and saying, yes, I will abide by the ordinance. Now, I will say that ordinance is out of date to this one, and that needs to be updated. So I've already told Dana and Roger that the, their website ordinance is out of date to the one that is actually been acted for four years. He's out, okay. All right, so my opinion on this is that I think a campfire and bonfire should still be permitted. I don't think it, I, I think that a, without a permit doesn't make sense to me, because regardless, we don't have fire hydrants. And it's not onerous on the user, and end user to fill out a form and say, hey, I'm going to have a bonfire between these day, or a campfire tonight.
I can agree with that.
And the fire department will get a notification, you read through the ordinance, what you have to have available at your bonfire, campfire, cooking fire, recreational fire that's inside of a ring, whatever it may be. It, it's not an onerous step for the, for my neighbor, who's having a fire, to say, hey, fire department, I'm going to have a fire here. I'm not telling you to, like, invite you over for brisket, but I am, but I am, but I am letting you know that.
I mean, it has to do with the ti-, that, that, that timing issue, because I don't think you can apply for one at 6:00 PM, and then go out in the backyard and make your bonfire.
Well, you also have to have your fire out by a certain time.
By, by dusk, yeah.
But if you want to have campfire, you're going to have that maybe 10 o'clock at night, and you do that, that's true.
Right, that's why I would say it should not require a permit. That you can have a spun, you know, a fairly, you say, you know what, let's go out in the backyard and roast some marshmallows. We don't need to call for a permit on that.
It says for, it doesn't call an exception for that. It says, all fires shall be totally extinguished at or before sunset in our current ordinance.
Right, and I, I'm not a big fan of that.
Oh, man. I'm not an ordinance.
But I, you know, I remember, but this is the whole thing about we're too restrictive, we're too, you know, boy, I thought I was being a good Boy Scout, and making it so that we're going to really, you know, we're going to have some control over this, but, you know, if it were my way, I'd say, no, they can go out in the backyard and have a campfire if they want to.
Why do we, why do they have to be out by dusk? You don't light them until.
It should be an exception
Yeah.
for, for campfire.
That sort of seems.
It seems more restrictive in that regard. Well, either way, the, um, the requirement also is that, um, someone needs to be present, and a means to extinguish the bonfire, the, a fire needs to be available.
Hose, I think, the existing one.
Right.
So, there, so, right, so a hose is, it, I mean, maybe that wording is too, too restrictive. There are other means of putting out a fire, like sand, or.
I mean, we use the word or.
Right. So, we don't have to do, make a decision tonight, um, because I'm presenting, we're presenting this as new business tonight, but think on this, think on it, and if we, you know, council's looking for a narrow idea with regards to bonfire, however, it's not unheard of, the planning goes back to and says, you've opened a can of worms. We'd like to tweak these things at the same time to help accommodate your narrow focus. Thoughts? All right, Kathy, go ahead.
What's the consequence? You know, we don't really have a consequence to a lot of our ordinances. We say you're not allowed to, well, what do we do?
There is a consequence. There are penalties that, that falls under the penalties of the count, of.
Municipal civil infraction.
Yeah.
Also, just be a good neighbor, like, my neighbor and I, we share, like, our backyards are right there, we just say, hey, we're gonna have a fire tonight, you cool? Yeah.
That's right.
I mean, we have a fund, so it makes nice neighbors, but like, the idea is that I'm, I'm happy hearing their little kid out there, excited to have the fire, like, those things make me happy.
And just, just so you know, the state of Michigan has a, um, burn ordinance requirement, and our ordinance can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive to their ordinance, so, um.
Find out what that is.
Well, uh, Dana, do you mind forwarding that email with the links to that, to that commission of planning? Or, that'd be great, thank you. Okay. Agenda, where are we? Any more comments on fires, campfire, uh, open burn ordinance? Okay, so, next point of order, um, the December meeting for Planning Commission is, um, currently late into the month.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I believe.
Second, I would say.
No, no, it's. Hold on.
I've got it on the 11th.
Yeah, we usually move.
Okay, then, no, yeah, then keep it on the 11th. I was thinking it was the third Wednesday of the month, and not. Okay, so I didn't update my calendar. So, keep it on the 11th is what I was proposing to do. Put it on 11th is what I was proposing, proposing to do. If it's already there, then that's moved. Okay, so. Never mind.
Is that me, is it time for my favorite part of the meeting?
It is.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. My favorite, aye.
That's only because I'm so cold.